All right. It is my pleasure to virtually call to order the January tenth meeting of the Freeport Planning Board, a few minutes after six. We'll jump right in with item number one, which is information exchange. Actually, Chris, I will explain. I would love to be there in person, but tonight I am at home. I may at some point ask Robert to run the meeting if it gets a little glitchy, but we're gonna see how it works doing this hybrid thing. I just, nobody in the room there wants what's been going around my house this week, so.
Thank you.
So we're gonna try this out. Anyway, item number one, information exchange. An update on the Freeport Downtown Vision Plan implementation. I will take a stab at that one. So the, I think we talked, I can't remember exactly the timing of it actually, but I think there was a council meeting right after our last planning board meeting at which the council approved the, the sort of framework for the downtown vision implementation. They voted to move forward with the projects that had, projects and goals, I should say, that had been identified. The next phase is to break out into, it's kind of these little more formal working groups and start working on the charters for each of these projects. That's happening this week. I just got an email from Caroline today, actually maybe yesterday, starting to work toward that. So that's happening across all the goals and projects, I think there's 21. So keep, you know, we'll keep moving forward. As always, it is a public process and people are welcome to, you know, to join in as they have time and interest. So Cecilia, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
No, I think it's a good overview of it. I would just add that we'll have the next, the next task force meeting is gonna be Thursday, January 26th, if anyone wants to join.
Item number two is something that Cecilia will know much more than I do about. It is an update on the Freeport Climate Action Plan.
Sure. So we are just getting started on the climate action plan still. We're still on that data gathering phase and GP Cog will be doing some data analysis. The good news is that we just posted a job for a part-time sustainability coordinator that will be shared with Yarmouth. So if anyone has any people they have in mind, or if you have networks you could share with, that would be great. The job is posted online. And the next thing is that GP Cog is, will be putting together a webpage that can serve as a webpage for the climate action plan, which will be great because our town website is not sometimes the easiest one to navigate. So hopefully, once that goes live, we'll try to start getting more people to, like directing them to that. And FSAB, the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board, is working on a public engagement plan, so we're rolling.
Subitem three is a report of items reviewed by the project review board. Cecilia, we'll look to you again for this one.
Yeah, so I don't, I wasn't at that meeting, but it's just a brief overview. We had a signage that was, I guess, approved for American Eagle. There was an accessibility ramp application for Kendall Lane. We had another one of those shoreline stabilization applications on Morganser Way. I hope I'm pronouncing these names right. An after-the-fact change of use for a single-family house and construction services at 1131 US Route One. And there was an application for Depot Square, a multifamily dwelling that's on the former, I believe, Petriello's lot or building. And that's to build a three-story, I think, six-unit completely residential apartment.
Could you repeat this?
Yes, so, excuse me, that would be on, sorry.
Drink some water.
Yeah. There was an application for a multifamily dwelling unit on, I'm gonna move, at 15 Depot Street. So I think it's on the building that used to be Petriello's.
You mean tear down Petriello's and put a bigger building up there?
I don't know. I don't, I didn't go to that building, but.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's good.
Yeah.
I think. It'll be more, sort of go with the three-story around the corner, make it a little denser.
I miss the pizza, but yeah.
And more people.
And I believe Caroline sends to you every time there's an agenda for the project review board meeting, so you could also, you know, get some information on that and read the staff report.
Yep, right, cool.
Sorry about that. So that's my update on the project review by the project review board.
Thanks.
All right. Item number two is a review of the minutes from the December 7th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. Anybody have any issues with this, or are we ready to?
So Sam.
Yes.
We didn't have that, those minutes ready, so that item needs to be tabled.
Okay, that does make sense. Do we need to motion to table? I think we do, do we?
I think you do.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to table?
Motion.
Second.
A second? And then all in favor, and I think we need to do, we need to actually do a roll call because of the hybrid meeting, so I'll ask Anna first.
What?
And I vote yes. And then in the room, Robert, Andrew.
Yes.
Rosemary.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
And Mitch.
Yes.
All right, I kinda skipped around there a little bit, but now I can see you guys. Great, all right, moving on to item number three, Freeport subdivision ordinance, discussion on possible amendments to incorporate state standards, general updates, and language clarifications.
Yeah. Do you want me to give an overview, Sam?
Please, yeah.
Okay. So basically, we're not expecting anything substantial to come out of this in terms of the draft that we're presenting and the one that we'll probably be presenting next time. This is, we're trying to clean it up. For one thing, we were trying to add these state standards that are missing. We discussed this back in May of 2021. It's just, the project of updating that got kind of sidetracked by other projects as we got busy. The other thing too is that we wanted to make sure that after we made changes to the shoreline ordinance, that, that those definitions matched the ones on this subdivision definitions and so forth and so on with the zoning ordinance as well. So it's basically, you know, cleaning up things that errors, not errors, but inconsistency so that there's consistency between the ordinances. And then we did some other type of minor cleanup such as updating things such as what's required for submissions for the Cumberland County of deed records and things like, there was references to Aquamane and things that have been kind of gotten outdated and changed throughout the years such as the main stormwater. So there was like references to documents that are now outdated. So if you open up the ordinance, you'll see that there's some changes there. I wanna first say I am sorry that I did not update the table of contents here, so the numbers were off in case anyone was wondering. Caroline is also reviewing and she will probably find more updates to add to this. And she might also bring this to the project review board so we receive their comments and incorporate those and for some further legal review for certain sections. So there might be an updated draft coming up. Mostly I'm looking for your feedback on it. There's some, so the changes are cross-references and definitions, and then there's some updated terms that you will see there. But then there's also the state standards, and there are basically two standards. One is for farmland and the other one is for timber extraction. So basically, there are nothing really that we can expect to make much of a difference in terms of practice or to the town. The farmland one, and that's when you open the, I believe it's Article 11, the way we have it on our subdivision ordinance, we state the state standard first. So it's Article 11 on page 35. And I believe there might be 21 standards that are from the state. So we start, the way the subdivision ordinance is organized, we write down the state standard, and I made some other minor alterations so that the language pretty much matches the state language. Yeah, so, so I mean, that's where the article starts. So the changes start on page 39. There's some, we add some language that was under traffic conditions. So it's basically.
Yeah, but wasn't that just matching the state standard?
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm not even sure I understand the point of this discussion. I did read it carefully and review your changes.
I should.
And they all seemed, I mean, like you may need them to be reviewed in the final format and signed off on, but I didn't see anything that was even up for discussion. It seems like it was just matching the state standard and/or fixing the language.
Yeah, so it's just basically you're the planning board, so ultimately you would be the ones approving these amendments.
Right, so if this is the final version, then that's fine, but if it's not, then we should go read the, every change carefully just to sign off, but it didn't seem like there's anything to discuss here.
Yeah. And if there's anything that you found as you were reading it that you think we should pay attention to it, that's the feedback that I'm.
Well, my question is, is there anything else? And I didn't, I only looked at your changes and said, oh, yeah, 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 you know? But is there anything in this ordinance that should be changed or of a more strategic nature that matches the vision plan, or is it, because this would be the time to do it if there is? Or is there nothing here that matters to, is there anything here that we should be reviewing?
Cross-reference type thing.
So, you know, apart, I think right now, the plan that I've been informed by Caroline is to just do this cleanup. We're not looking to do any kind of major overhaul. It's just that we have this slow period this month, so we just wanted to work on a project that has been kind of sidetracked. Go ahead, Andy.
So these terminal, these definitions you've plugged in are mandated by state?
The definition of farmland is the state definition.
Are we required to plug this in?
I'm not sure of the answer to that, Andy.
I'm just wondering, because it comes up with acreage, is that only if it's in a subdivision? Like if you're subdividing a piece of farmland?
That's what, I guess, that definition comes from the state.
But in what context?
Consistency.
Does it apply only to subdivided parcels or all pieces of land?
I believe, if I remember this correctly, that definition of the farmland, it comes into effect when you look at Article 11 and basically the subdivision ordinance. The state requirement is what we added there. It's just mostly asking us to identify the farmlands, so.
And I don't, I'm trying to figure out why, you know, how do we, how do we use it in this ordinance?
Well, so.
If somebody's got a farm and they cut it up, do they have to identify if there's five acres of farmland?
They would have to show that there's the farmland according to that definition and the state references some.
What, what, if they're subdividing, is this leftover, is this leftover land that they're gonna keep for farming, or is this just to identify that it was farmland?
My understanding of it is that you have the subdivision ordinance. I'm still wrapping my head around it. So when, when somebody comes in for a subdivision review, they're gonna have to show that they meet all these standards that, you know, they're the state standards that are mandated, but there also are standards as well. So with the farmland, the, the only thing that it's adding to it, it says identification. It's basically identify farmlands that are considered significant based on that definition from the state. So it's just identification, so, so you have that on page 62, you have identification, you know, copied and pasted the state standard there, and then I added the performance standard, which will just be that it's gonna show the standards that are within or about the subdivision. So that when the project review board is reviewing a subdivision application, they will just be aware that it's there.
Hmm.
I don't know about the legal implications of it in terms of.
I'm still confused.
I can get back to you too. I can try to find out some more about it.
I have another question in the back here. It says, you've changed in two or three places here, the boundaries of parcel based upon the standard survey. You've changed registered land surveyor to professional land surveyor. Is that?
That's what they go by now.
That's what they go by now? That's the new state definition?
Yeah.
So that's like those minor updates so that we're not making references to outdated terms or rules.
And the third one I have, I was talking to Robert about this land subject to liquidation harvesting.
Yeah, I'm confused by that too. It does. I, as a forester, I should understand it, but I.
I read that and I could not make any sense of it. I tried so hard and I just gave up.
I don't know.
I mean, when you read the wording of it, substantially eliminate liquidation harvesting has occurred.
Yeah, it's very confusing.
The language doesn't flow right here, so you can understand it.
Well, what's the goal? I mean, is it to, to stop it, which is a very difficult thing to do? I mean.
I think it's.
It seems they're trying to get people to not.
Higress the forest.
Well, also, there's a penalty in here if you've done that. There's a five-year wait to, to subdivide, I think if I read it right.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Kind of though, but it's like, it's so confusing because the five years have elapsed from the date the land, land owner, under whose ownership the harvest occurred, acquired the part, like it doesn't.
Right.
So Vic strips it and then cuts it and then sells it, and then the next guy starts at zero.
Right, exactly. Like it just doesn't, it doesn't make.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a strange, so, but I guess part of the question is how much leeway, if any, do we have to make alterations to this, or is it just this is what the state says we have to do?
So, you know, a lot of towns, they don't, they don't use the entire, you know, our style for our subdivision ordinance is to copy the language of the state standard, kind of word for word if it's applicable. So that's, it is, it's an offo section, I completely agree, but that's the language.
It's all embedded in the state standard.
Exactly.
And that's just a section on the state standard, or.
But do we have to plug it in? That's my question.
Right.
You mean, is it, are we mandated to have?
Right.
That's my question.
Well, it is a good question, and I don't have that legal background. I did notice that other towns might just, some towns have not updated their, their subdivision ordinance to include this. They're still there. Others, other towns, they actually just list, you know, one through whatever, and they just write the title of the state standard and refer to it. So it's not in their ordinance.
Do you want to throw that question up to the attorney?
Sure. Yeah, so we're wondering if the language needs to be there.
Right, right. Or if any state language, do we need to adhere to all?
And could we alter this language if we want to do it that way?
Right.
Also be interesting to see if there's any state backup, you know, explanation to this language. What's the, what's the, you know?
Yeah, do we have any feedback up to the state to say maybe there's an error in here or something?
It reads so strange when you start to read it.
And I wouldn't want to be the forester saying, you tell me, is this liquidation? Good luck. I, that's a tough, that's a tough thing to answer. And there's ramifications, you know, five years.
Yeah, that's a long time.
That's a long time.
Liquidation harvesting, I think, is defined by the state.
Yeah, it is like, it's like a high grade.
Basically, like you clear, you buy a lot or whatever, you clearcut it, and then you sell it right away. It's kind of like you harvested all, you left, you know, like a horrible situation there, and now you're like selling these. So I think that's what's, my idea is maybe that's what was intended when the state put this together.
Must be some backup language that goes along with this. When they wrote this language, it must have been some backup language why they wrote this or the explanation of, you know, what the problem was.
So that makes it, so like, if that's the definition, or roughly the definition of liquidation harvesting, theoretically, somebody could buy a parcel and then wait that five years, then clearcut it and sell it immediately, and they'd, like, the five years would already have passed, right?
I don't know.
I mean, theoretically, they could apply for a permit to get a clearcut and then do the clearcut, and they're legal, and then resell it, and nothing will happen.
Then it says at the bottom, if you have a, you know, if you have a forester come in and says it's all right, you know, he's gotta demonstrate, you know, that you actually violated something.
That's tough, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, at the end of the day, I'm not sure how much any of this really is gonna impact us in Freeport. I mean, it's almost more like, if we're gonna have something in our town ordinance, it should be decipherable, especially given that we have a forester on the planning board.
Yeah, exactly.
Which, on one hand, you know, I was hoping, Robert, that you'd be able to shed some light, but it actually makes me feel better about myself that it was as confusing to you as it is to me.
Absolutely.
Because I was thinking, I probably just don't understand this because I don't know what I'm talking about, but, yeah, okay. So I guess, I guess it would be helpful to have some clarification so that we can just try, try to streamline it for the future, although I will say the caveat, like, I don't think we should be spending tons of time, resources, or like legal fees trying to figure this particular section out, because it does seem like it's probably not gonna have a huge impact on the town.
I agree.
That's just my opinion.
Right. Basically, do we need to have it in there?
Yeah. Lots in Freeport, it's just gonna apply to.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, we can, we can ask the, so basically, we should ask the attorneys if we can just, you know, change or clarify the language so that it's more, or leave it out.
Leave it out, yeah.
The only, yeah.
So could I just make one comment on that? I think the point of putting the state standards in here is for the convenience of the applicants that they have, that they can see what's required in, now, I don't know if this is a comprehensive coverage of the state standards that are applicable when you're subdividing a property in Freeport, but if they are, that's something we might want to stay consistent with because it's super helpful.
Right.
Now, this one in particular, you might excise and say no, you know, but the principle of repeating the state standards seems good, at least to me.
It protects the town too. Listen, we're adhering to state standards, you know? This is not, we're not atypical, right?
I guess it also puts the burden on, on the review, whatever review process is that we're checking that too.
But it has to be, I mean, the applicant has to be able to understand it.
Yeah, they can't do it.
None of that has anything to do with this problem, right?
No, that's a great, that's a great point. The applicant has to be able to understand, and I think the other thing is probably the reason, this is, I'm assuming a relatively new addition to the state standards, it's probably in there for a reason, like there was probably an issue with liquidation harvesting and subdivisions somewhere in the state. So for that reason, maybe I should temper my earlier dismissal of the, of the issue, or not dismissal, but you know what I mean?
It just tends to happen at a larger land.
It is probably worth figuring out what's going on, so.
Okay. So I'll see if I can get some clarification and ask if that language needs to be there, and if it does, if we can simplify the language so that it's more comprehensible.
Can I go back to my question and accepting that the goal here was a quick cleanup? And I guess a quick cleanup doesn't involve, it doesn't even involve having to go to the town council and getting those things checked off? I mean, if it's generally just a cleanup, you have to go through all that process?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And, and then separately, is there some schedule or timetable that we should be looking at it more globally?
In terms of like future projects?
Well, yeah, is it right? Is it, is it right in broad? Is anybody, I mean, you're cleaning up what's here, and I'm trying to figure out, has anybody checked it, or do we need to, you probably, I already heard, that's not what this is about, that's for later. So I get that it's for later. I'm just wondering, is, is it part of our responsibility to review these and to make sure that there's nothing else in there?
I think that is part of our responsibility.
Well, so that's, that at least should be put on the agenda for some, on some timetable. I mean, it goes with the design standards and the, you know, the comprehensive plan, so it's like, it's probably gotta be some schedule for how those get considered more deeply.
I wish there was a table with a schedule that was clearcut. We don't have one.
So you say there might be more amendments besides these at some point?
Yes.
So this is just sort of draft one of amendments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So we can answer some of these questions and then move on to the next.
Um, yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah. It's a, you know, there's.
Exactly.
There's a lot of things in the subdivision ordinance that, that, when I read it.
Might be screwy.
One thing that I would flag is that, you know, we have standards that are related to subdivision that's on the zoning ordinance, you know, the commercial open space, open space, and it's not here and you can't really, like, you wouldn't really know, it's almost like obscurely in the zoning ordinance, you know, it's, and should it all be together or easy to find? Another thing.
So that's sort of like what we did with shoreline zoning? When we incorporated the zoning stuff into the shoreline zoning, made it a stand, not a standalone, but made it a document that was completely comprehensive too?
Right, yeah, yeah.
So you would like to do that with this?
I'm not, that's a much bigger project.
These are lofty goals here. We're mostly putting out fires.
You know.
Yes, in the ideal world, we would have a place where you're not.
It'd be a standalone document.
So you'd pick up the subdivision document, include everything in it for a subdivision that's also in the zoning ordinance over here and it's not here?
Maybe. There might be a reason why they kept it, you know, they kept some things on the zoning ordinance. We don't really know, like, I don't really know that yet.
It should be referenced in this, or at least referred.
I know that's, to speak for Nick Adams for a second, I know that's been on his list of things to do just for ease of use.
Yeah, makes sense.
To make that change.
I agree.
Yeah, another thing too is that there's a reference here, a couple of references to like this, this open space plan from 1999, and then there's, it's this old PDF, and I'm wondering, you know, how, how are we like reviewing things to?
Yeah, how applicable.
It's like, if there's a reference to a document and we sit down C1 on the commercial, it's like there's a reference to a document that was made a long time ago that maybe nobody's looking at it anymore, but it's still in the zoning ordinance or it's still in the subdivision ordinance.
There's, along those lines, my sort of very nitpicky one minor thing is, I'm wondering if, because we, as part of this, it seems like you updated what used to be Main Aqua or Aquamane.
Yeah.
Main Water Company. I'm wondering if there's a generic way to call that out as like the municipal water servicing company or something like that, so that in the future, if Main Water, I don't know, rebrands or becomes something different, we don't have to go back through this whole process. And it's just sort of generic, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think I do know what you mean. That's a good point, the, so maybe if we could just say whichever water company is servicing the town of Freeport, because it's a whole water districting thing which is, yeah.
Yeah, I would assume there's some definition somewhere that, that can call, you know, where you could, you could refer to the municipal and it wouldn't be, I mean, I don't think we'd ever have two of them or something competing, so, I mean, that's the whole point of a utility, right? So anyway, that was my very minor thought.
South Freeport Water under the control of Main Water?
Yeah, it is.
It is. So they've merged.
We have an official water district, both for South Freeport and for Freeport, happens to be that Main Water operates them, but we have a district that's regulated by the Public Utilities Commission.
Or South Freeport alone.
South Freeport is separate from Freeport, yeah.
So who, are they owned by the same?
Same company.
Same company owns them?
I believe so, yeah. But two separate water districts.
Yeah, yeah.
It's also confusing that the sewer district is separate, but all the billing is handled by Main Water, right? So, or it's all, all the billing is handled by the same whatever. Sorry, now I'm getting into.
By Main Water because they get, you know, they read the water meter and it's judged on water and water out, so that's why they're, they're just.
Right, yeah.
They're just doing, they've subcontracted the bill now because they read the meters.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, other comments on the subdivision ordinance? I, I sort of agree with, I think it was Mitch's comment that in general, I think it's great to just clean up the language and make things consistent, but yeah, bigger, bigger stuff to come. Any other thoughts?
Nope.
Great. Item number four is a discussion on possibly adding parking lots as a permitted use in the VC1 zoning district. Parking, everybody's favorite topic. Caroline, do you want, Caroline, jeez.
That's okay.
Old habits die hard. Cecilia, especially when I'm not in the room, Cecilia, do you want to give us a quick overview of this one?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so, I shared this map with you, which I can show it here in case it makes it easier. So, basically, we have all these standalone surface parking lots. However, VC1 standalone parking lots are not a permitted use. So, then, if somebody has, you know, with this current language, they're non-conforming, which creates an issue or problems for certain types of development. So, if somebody, you might have a situation, for example, where a property owner of one of these surface parking lots wants to split their lot and, say, develop only half of it, but wants to keep the other side as a parking lot, they wouldn't be able to do that because it would be non-conforming. So, the draft that I'm showing to you only have these two changes. It's just, you know, adding parking lot to it, and there's a, it's like, there's a fix to a typo that is under 25. So, basically, this would be like the quick fix, which would be to just add parking lots as an allowable use, so that it will resolve that non-conforming issue. Because now, currently, the only standalone parking lots that are allowed are, that's section 23, so, sorry, if anyone is disoriented, is section 413, Village Commercial 1, Part C, and then 23.
I'm sorry, and now I'm, I'm lost.
You weren't lost before, maybe, and now?
No, I was following until this part.
Yes. So, under permitted uses on Village Commercial 1, um, number 23.
Oh, twen, now I'm with you.
Yeah, sorry, it, it does...
Parking lots to serve A and B buildings, that's already there.
Mm-hmm. So, this has actually been here since 2000, since 1986.
Well, does, does that not cover it? What, what, what's the difference?
Yeah.
It's too specific.
It's, it's...
Yeah, it's only for the historically significant...
Right.
A and B buildings, and a lot, you know, a lot of the buildings in VC1 would be C or unclassified, I think.
Right.
Or is it that, I don't, yeah, anyway. A lot of them would not fall under the...
Well, but why wouldn't the fix be to just delete that, then?
Yeah, so...
Delete the after parking lots, after the word parking lots in 23, all of that?
That was the first thing that I thought, and I wanted to do that. But Caroline said that we might be creating then issues, because right now, we have the situation where, in the VC2 districts, there might be buildings where their parking is being met by having these parking lots on the VC1 district. So, it's possible that we could, you know, we need that to serve that VC2 district parking.
Yes, it is kind of hairy.
Shouldn't it be in the section 413 VC2?
413.
We're in, we're in VC, this is VC1.
Yeah.
This is referring to parking lots for...
Because these parking lots, they can exist as, um, we can have a surface, standalone surface parking lot on VC1.
In VC1, okay.
If it's serving a use for a building on VC2.
In VC2, forgot it.
That's only allowed if the building is classified as an A or a B building. I think that's the sticky part.
Exactly, Sam.
Because, because if you took out parking lots, say, say you made it read parking lots, and then you said, oh, these parking lots can also be used to serve buildings in the VC2, well, then, any parking lot could be used to serve a building in VC2, which I think was not the intent when this thing was written. Very confusing.
It is confusing.
Well, I, I, I got a bunch of questions.
Yes.
I mean, the first one is, it seems self-evident that we should do this, because you're sitting with, you know...
Yeah, all these non-conforming uses.
Fifteen percent of the entire real estate being non-conforming, and we all know we need and have parking lots. So, I'm trying to figure out what the, two questions. One is, if you permit parking lots, if you just say parking lots are now permitted, then I don't understand why you need 23. It seems to be parking lots are now permitted, who cares what they're for? If they're permitted, they're permitted.
Yeah.
Which brings up my second question, which is, there may be some other issue here, which is the fear that there were going to be more and more. I don't know if we have that fear today, and if we need to guard against it, but I think that was probably the point, was to maybe let these be non-conforming so that they already exist, but it's not going to get worse.
Meaning, fear of, like, someone tearing down a building?
Building and making more parking, tearing down more stuff and making more parking lots.
I think the market will take care of that. That would be a, that would be a pretty stupid thing to do.
Yeah, I believe.
Then, I don't know why, if you add parking lots are acceptable, you need anything else about parking lots. It's just, they're now okay.
Some of them are tied to buildings, that's all.
That's, that's why, exactly.
And of course, some of these parking lots became not needed because we changed the parking requirements. All these parking lots were tied to a storefront somewhere at some point. It was supposed to be 600 feet from the front entrance. And then, when we changed the parking requirements, all of the storefronts didn't need as much parking. So, these parkings really aren't needed to be tied to a storefront anymore because of the changes, so...
So, I think, I think Mitch's question, if I'm understanding it correctly, is basically like, if it's a parking lot, it's a parking lot, who cares what it serves? So, it is, what is the technical, and you may not know the answer to this, Cecilia, I, I don't, or maybe there isn't an easy answer, but is there a technical reason that a parking lot would be non-conforming if it serves a building outside of the district? Or could you just say, this is a parking lot, it doesn't, like, it, it's conforming because it's a parking lot in VC1, and then the building happens to be in VC2, but that, that's almost beside the point?
Yeah, so, I, I was also under that impression, but, and I can check, I'll check back with Caroline about that, but she said that, that section would still need to be there so it can serve the VC2 parking. But I can, I can point that out, and I can get back...
I'm not sure why, that would be a zoning issue at that point.
Right.
It's like, if, if, if I have a parking lot in my backyard, and that's, I have some deal with somebody in VC2 that they can use this parking lot as their credit, what is, what does that have to do with the zoning of this area, which allows parking lots?
Yeah.
Well, one question...
There may be a reason. I think that's a great question.
I mean, there may be a reason. I'm not saying there isn't, I just...
Well, one, one issue is...
Oh, yeah, no, I think, I think you're, I think you're on to something. I think it's a great question.
Is, is parking a permitted use in VC2?
Um, I'm sorry, but I forgot to look that up, but we can grab that.
Because if it is, then...
It might not be.
Then it doesn't matter.
No, it probably isn't, or they, or some, so there's some restrictions there that are being fulfilled here. It's just if we allow parking lots here and they're being used to fulfill there, it doesn't really change the land use. The land use is a parking lot, which is now permitted.
You just want to make sure you don't take away the tie from VC2, that they are tied to these parking lots, that's all.
Right, but I mean, where does that show? When somebody has this transaction that, that I need parking over here and I got it over there, which happens all over with the shared parking stuff, that's not in the zoning. The zoning permits it, but it would be in the application or the, in each...
So, so, okay, so, potentially, this is, I may be getting out over my skis here a little bit, but I think what may be going on is that these parking lots are specifically to serve A and B buildings as defined, which meet the requirements of section 413 D2. So, if you look at 413 D2, that's...
Minimum.
...state's road frontage.
None.
None. Right? So, does that mean that VC2 buildings without road frontage have the ability to use a parking lot? I don't know. I'm confusing myself. But it seems like that may be the key, is that they're trying to, like, get around some sort of thing that might be hard to get around otherwise, but I don't know.
Yeah.
All right, I think we, we need the experts to weigh in on this. We could probably speculate about it all night.
Yeah.
So, so that's definitely something to be flagged for...
Similar language.
For review. Does anybody else have questions on this? I do have sort of a bigger, a bigger question, but willing to entertain others first.
Is it permitted uses?
Yeah, it just says what it is. Mixed-use development space standards. Parking area for open space.
Yeah, it's interesting, that has...
Parking lots to serve A and B buildings, basically the same.
Same, so it's basically the same language? Yeah. But, so, a parking lot standalone is not a permitted use in VC2 either?
Nope. We just don't want to screw up the people in VC2 if we eliminate something over here, that's all I don't want to do.
Yep, I'm with you.
Yeah. My, my question. Cecilia, you're gonna love this one, is, while we're at it, it's a sort of, it's a sort of while we're at it kind of question, is, we have, in recent months, and, and as we've looked through some of these ordinances for cleanup, we've tried to move performance standards out of the, the district sections. Is this an, is this an opportunity to do that? Because there's this, I mean, huge, a huge part of this is, is other performance standards.
Um...
Do we want to try to move it, or is that a...
This one, are you talking about the performance standards for the parking structures, that 413, the one that had the typo, 413 E4?
No, I'm talking about, like, the whole E, other standards section.
Yeah, that's what I...
Like, mo, mojor.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, it's...
That is weird.
I would love to simplify a lot of this. One of the places that often we have performance standards are in the permitted uses, and sometimes on the definitions to minor little performance standards. This one, I don't know, because it's for, oh, do you mean, do you think we should have under, some other performance standards, something just for parking structures, so that it would apply for any, so that whole section on section E4?
Yeah, I feel like some of this could be pulled out and applied to, I don't know, rather than repeating, but, I don't know, maybe.
I don't know if we have, do you know if we have that parking structures, um...
Yeah, it's maybe not.
Standards on any other zone? So, so what happened is this. At some point, we did a downtown vision plan, 2010, and I think that was done in the early 2000s. And parking must have emerged as an issue. And then, when they went to build the village station, they had to add parking structures and a disallowable use. And that's why I think you have all these performance standards here, Sam, for parking structures, because it was to develop a village...
Station.
Station parking lot. As with a lot of our ordinance, sometimes these things are reactive, and they end up being inserted into, you know, a certain place where you might not be expecting it. It's definitely general cleanup.
One of the questions, too.
You have to put some thought about, you know, where it could be moved to.
The question is, are there other districts that have similar parking standards?
I haven't...
And if that's the case, why wouldn't they all refer to one place? You could fix them in one place for everywhere.
Mm-hmm. Let me look at it, because off the top of my head, I won't know my, I think, not that I've noticed, but I can look at it. For instance, on C1, I noticed that we have a, we have a, as in, you know, one of the uses in that district is parking facility, but nowhere do we define what a parking facility is, so...
Or what the standards of how it has to be done, which is what this goes on and on and talks about.
Yeah. Um, in fact, the Tree Committee might be interested in having, adding requirements to parking lots, too, so maybe...
The who committee?
The Tree Committee, such as required, you know, trees on surface parking lots. It would be interesting to think about where those requirements would go, and if this...
I wonder if, yeah, or complete streets, too. Would complete streets have something to, something to say about that, where that it's, I don't know, like, how, yeah, how are parking lots integrated into pedestrian or bike?
Also, in the performance standards, E1, parking in the VC1 district is further subject to provisions of section 514.
Oh, yeah.
So, what, what, so now, right, okay.
Where's 514?
514 is the parking where we have all the table. Must be everyone's favorite.
Okay. So, it's just a way of not putting, I, I wonder if those...
Maybe it could go on 514.
Yeah.
Yeah, would there be different rules for parking structures if it was in, you know, someplace else? And if not, then why not just...
Yeah, we don't really have, I don't think, any type of parking structure anywhere else.
This is all really about parking structure, but there could someday be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they could have had structured parking at, at, at the new housing on Desert Road. They don't, they just have these garages, but, you know, a project like that could come with structured parking.
Yeah, and it would be great, I mean, surface parking lots, my understanding is that they're very expensive to build, but they're very handy in terms of, you know, it reduces the amount of, you know, impervious surface you're creating, and therefore pollution and water quality and all of that.
And you can put solar panels on the roof, which is fun.
Yeah.
But, um, another question, unless, yeah, that may be just more than we want to bite off, but another thing, while we're at it, somebody else may be able to read the minimum setbacks under, so I'm looking at, um, D4, section D, number four, minimum setback, and then item two. I just can't make any sense of the wording there and the little diagram where it says example. And this may just be me, somebody else might read that and say, oh, yeah, it makes perfect sense. In which case, I'd love an, an easy explanation, but it just seems like that could be cleaned up to make more sense to the average person like me.
What's he reading?
This one right here.
I think it's saying the light gray is okay. Like, if you have the dark gray, you could add the light gray. It's really confusing.
I think that is what...
Right, but that's, it's like, why is the light gray that shape? Does it have the, like, why does it, I don't, I don't understand.
They're building a really big porch.
Right.
Um, hmm.
And why is it gray in the back end? Is that a new addition?
Yeah, and who cares? Why is that relevant to this?
It doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, it's a poor diagram.
So, it's another one of these, kind of like, while we're at it, should, and we're, when, and we're trying to make our ordinances a little bit easier to navigate, is this a project that's worth taking on? Is this, just clean this up a little bit? I don't know.
And I wonder if this, you know, could go, if it would be something that should be flagged or addressed when we're looking at all the downtown zoning and trying to simplify it, because I, too, run into this all the time with our zoning ordinance, where I'm like, scratching my head going, what does that mean?
Oh, you could get so deep.
Because a lot of it is unclear or confusing. I agree with that.
Well, every time we see that, why wouldn't you...
Do something about it.
Do something about it, bring it up. Every single time, because how's it ever gonna, if we can't understand, I mean, it's probably worth asking three times, you know, like, I don't understand it, maybe somebody else does, or, you know, part of the history, but if nobody can figure it out, then it should be removed.
Yep.
Yeah, just wait until we get into C1.
Yeah, uh-huh. I have to fill my water, right back.
Okay.
Yeah, the other, the other thing is that the, and this is, again, this is really nitpicky, sorry, but the, the format is not the same. This is a, this is a, oh, you know, I'm trying to channel my inner Wayne here, where it says, Where it says where a sidewalk exists and then one is new structures and it's got these two hyphens and subheadings and then two is additions to existing structures. Colon, so then it's not, I think that's part of the confusion for me is like, it's not clear if it's the same type of. Say, I don't know, yeah, so the whole thing is confused.
I don't understand why.
The semicolon at the end really throws me for a loop too, so.
If you read down to B, if there's no sidewalk, you have to be fifteen feet back, which makes no sense because if you have a sidewalk, you, if the roof pitches. One or the other, you have to be five or ten feet back, but if there's no sidewalk to interfere, you have to be fifteen feet back.
That could be so if.
But from the property line, so they're assuming that the sidewalk is inside the property line, which isn't always the case.
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah, like I'm thinking about my front yard, which is cut in half by the property line and the side, I don't know, it's all very strange.
Yeah, sidewalk's part of the road right of way, right?
Yeah.
Sometimes it's in the right of way.
Well, at least in my house it is.
Sometimes it's cut through, cut through your property. Depends on where they put it back in the day.
Yeah.
Oh dear, all right.
I've always been confused by that.
Big man of worms.
Four.
It is, I mean.
Yeah.
It needs to be addressed, but.
Yeah, well, we are getting into the downtown, the whole downtown zoning area, so maybe we just flag it and say, hey, this is. And for now, we save the nonconforming. Or we, or we make, I should say, we make the legally nonconforming lots.
Conforming.
Just legal.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's a.
That's a no brainer.
No brainer there, yeah.
So my homework is, I have a few things to flag, the question about the parking lots, if we would still need that four thirteen C. Twenty-three, the technical explanation for that. If we should look into moving those performance standards that are basically related to parking structures to some other section. And then the rest might be flagging in terms of cleaning the language, which I wholeheartedly agree with.
Yeah, making it.
And this graph thing here, you know, with the sidewalk graph thing is sort of really.
Sam, you're an artist, aren't you?
I didn't touch it.
Not a good one.
Oh, I wonder if you're supposed to look at it in color. And then, but we print them black and white, so it just meshes together because.
No, it's in color.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense in color either.
No. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
I think the easiest thing right now is just clearly to make the nonconforming lots conforming.
Yep.
Will you vote on that tonight?
Oh, this is in a pub, public hearing.
Yeah.
Goals of the next meeting.
The notification isn't too bad on that then? I guess that's kind of where all this is coming from, from me is like, okay, if we're gonna notify the whole VC one that we're gonna change this minor thing, do we want to change other stuff while we're at it?
No, that's a good point. I can't remember, we do hit, I think, several condos, so it adds up to the notification, yeah, it's more sizable.
The really question is how quick do we want to get this done?
It's so easy, I mean, I feel like we just. Or it's so easy if we keep the scope very limited to adding parking lots, I feel like we just do it next month or as soon as we.
That's what I say.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as we have public, you know, public hearings, or as soon as we have some space in the schedule, might as well just do it.
All right, so should we just move forward with these two changes? And then we'll address the whole messy unclear language and things in weird places as we. Work with the downtown zoning.
That's.
Yeah, I think that's probably a more efficient approach. Sorry, I sidetracked our conversation there, but.
No, it's actually, it's really good for me even to hear that because I'm looking at these ordinances often and I'm like, I can't make sense of this part or that. It's refreshing to hear other people say the same thing.
Oh, God, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right, sorry, where's my agenda gone?
Commercial District one.
Yep, so now we get into the even.
Now we're into the C one.
Yep.
Right, yeah, item five is a review of existing ordinance language for the C one district, commercial one district. You want to kick us off, Cecilia?
Sure, so. Basically for this even. I have nothing, no suggestions yet to make. Except for, yeah. Basically, I'm looking for the feedback, you know, how it, it seems like. Neither staff and oftentimes people call, because there's a lot of vacant large lots there, people call and they're like, can I do this and that with my lot and the way different. People read the ordinance, or maybe even every time you read C one, you might come to a different understanding, so there are some, certain sections on it. That is very unclear what. The intention of the ordinance is. And a while back, I started going back and trying to find minutes to see, you know, why do we have the standard and that one, because it is, it's very sophisticated, but it's also. Rather confusing. And I'm wondering if any of you have, you know, what do you find unclear about it? Are there any things you think, you know, you want to flag?
Well, so now that's a, an assignment that I, I mean, I looked through it and I did make some circles on things that seemed super confusing. Or like I didn't understand why it was that way, but if you're asking us to look, read closely and say what would be unclear, I think we could all do that.
We also have our resident C one expert in the room here. So I'm always curious to hear.
Yeah, what do you think?
Andrew cares a lot about C one as a, as a, as a resident, I guess that was a pun, I didn't even intend it to be, but he is a, a resident of C one and cares a lot about that district, so.
We fought this battle for years, ever since they started. Uh, there's a couple of things that really don't work well. One is, uh, my neighbor's got a storage facility next door. He has to be, when you read it, you gotta be three hundred feet back to have a storage facility.
I, I don't know why that's in there, and that was amended.
Wow, because they wanted to stop storage facilities. So really what happened years ago was everything, we fought for all these uses, and then when it came to implementation, it became very testy and. They put in barriers, basically, it's my personal opinion, barrier so it wouldn't happen. One is, um, the Royal River Health Food Store was built and it was a hundred foot setback at the time and a fifty percent lot ratio coverage. It was built as a wildlife museum, the guy had a bunch of stuffed animals in there and stuff, and it sort of failed because when you're driving by, back then it was seventy miles an hour one way. It was an outbound lane of ninety-five, uh, from fifty-seven to eighty-five. So when you're driving by at seventy, uh, double, you just don't see these things unless they're up on the street. So we had to put the parking in front and now we want people to put the parking in the rear and then it looks like there's nobody there. You know, it ought to be some combination of both, it ought to be a door facing the street, so it looks like there's an entrance. You know, the guy across from Napa there tried to develop those lots. And it's permitted use, but you go down there, I went on some of the sidewalks and there was a big argument about, and they had, he had to heist up a balloon to see how high the building was gonna be and how many. Can't have garage doors facing the street if it's commercial, that's why every garage on Route one. Garages don't face the street, garage doors don't, so, you know, it becomes very complicated and frustrating for a developer to come in and then of course, you know, to live there, it's. I mean, I'm just living there, but you know, it just, you look around and you say, you know, nothing's happening.
Well, maybe then we should start with revisiting what the purpose of this district is.
Yeah, so when you read the purpose of the district, it says, um, the intent of this ordinance. Is, uh, this district is intended to be flexible with regard to minimum lot area, road frontage requirements and setbacks from property lines. Provided points of access to US Route one are limited and design standards are met. So when I looked at the history. And we don't have like a clear history of it, so you have to piece together a lot of folder, paper files and things that you can find and oftentimes. The minutes aren't very intricate or you can't find them. It seems like there was a huge concern, I mean. Let's rewind back, you know, at some point, those were like industrial areas and then you had part of, you know, two ninety-five wasn't there, it was US Route one, and then there was this huge mess when they were building it. Prior to C one, it used to be C one and C two, so C two would have been that narrow strip of my, um, land in between that was sandwiched in between. Two ninety-five and US Route one, so you had these two standards, but then they combined them and I think that's where things started to get a little messy and it also starts to get a little messy, the more sophisticated you try to make them. As they added, you know, like water and sewer is now available there, so they try to be even more flexible and then in. Maybe Andy, you remember this, but they, they, at some point, they did, um, FEDC did a study, so they basically have this whole. Route one design guideline, which is referenced in, I think, the performance standards for commercial zones. Another document, example of a document that is referenced, but nobody's using, um, and it was hard to find it and, you know, find online and I find like a paper copy of it, so it's basically, they had thought out a whole way of develop, redeveloping that. And I think once you start trying to add things and then you have also, you're trying to add things to allow and to be more flexible, but on the other hand. Some people then might become nonconforming and this is push and pull and we ended up with this ordinance, so.
So is there a vision for that area that was, I'm sorry, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, there was a vision for it, it was put out by FEDC and she has a copy of it somewhere, I looked at the other day.
Is it relevant?
No, it wasn't. Uh, it was only contingent if they got us, a bunch of us in the room, uh, land up and down there, basically across from. Napa, right up through to the hardware store, right up through maybe to Old County Road where it comes across, and they wanted us to all put our land together and they had a vision of going in and building service roads that were parallel to Route one and having a whole bunch of housing developments and a little village back in there and all this stuff and. You know, some of my neighbors and, you know, we said, well, we're not really, this isn't a group effort, you know, if you, one of my neighbors got forty or fifty acres and they said, if you want to control it, you buy it. You know, we're not throwing our land into a pool, you know, for you guys to develop willy nilly, uh, and so it never really happened. It was one of these things, it was a grand scheme that was not really the neighborhood's design. Or the landowner's idea.
Nor even a developer who said, I'm gonna buy out all these people.
Nobody came.
Nobody came, right?
Nobody came.
Well, I think it's difficult when you're saying it's a commercial district and our goal is to encourage attractive entrance, right? I mean, it, this, it's commercial by nature, so, and attractive is very subjective.
And that was always the fight, and somebody would stand up and say, well, this is the great entrance to Freeport, except they wouldn't even admit that exit seventeen was part of, it could put you off into Freeport. They forced everybody to get off at exit twenty and twenty-two and we complained for years, uh, that, you know, hey, we're part of the commercial district too. Why won't you advertise district, you know, exit seventeen?
It's Freeport, right.
And, and the head of FEDC at the time told me, he said, well, we want to direct everybody to the center of town and then we'll distribute them out from there. No, no, they can drive right by our place. I mean, it's permitted, it's, it's a legal road. And, you know, there was this constant fight with the downtown and, and the Route one south, and we were sort of the bastard child, to use a old term.
So you feel like it's not being developed because of that?
Uh, not now, but it was then, um, you know, I don't know if they act, you know, when you used to go through the Falmouth Toll, there was a little plaque, a piece of paper stuck to the door, it said, Freeport, exit twenty and twenty-two. Stuck right to the little handwritten label. It's like, eh, what about us, you know? And, uh, the restrictions just got very tight down there because I, we always believed they wanted to protect the high rents downtown. Because rents down on that end of town would be a little bit cheaper.
The brewery should help.
Well, that got, you know, that didn't always go well either. I mean, they tried to put a brewer up behind Sunrise Cafe and, and that got fought pretty hard. And they, it was mass landing, they ended up over by Shaw's, but they wanted to build up in the little parking lot up back and. The previous town plan had demanded that we, the developer put in a sidewalk the whole length of his property, he said, done deal, I'm not doing it. Not putting a sidewalk in, when I got this huge parking lot, people gonna walk in and a sidewalk to nowhere. I walk that road every day for exercise and sidewalks just plug up the water going in the ditch, that's all they do, you know?
Yeah, I think it's hard to look at, at C one in some ways, the, the language in section four oh nine without also sort of reading five twenty-seven in parallel, which is the, you know, the performance standards for the C one district. Because I think that's had a huge impact on how C one is developed, so. It's probably worth taking, taking a look at that as well, just for, as much for understanding as.
Maybe some point we can get a big map and stick up there and sort of look at the. If you're interested, I can give you a pretty historical detail what's going on down there.
I mean, it certainly helps to figure out where we're going, knowing that what the history of it is and what.
I mean, I was sort of hoping that, you know, there would be maybe some residential down there. When I was a kid, it was fifty fifty, it was motels and cabins and a few small businesses and the rest of us lived there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I mean, uh, the sidewalk thing I know is kind of tough one to understand for a while, but I mean, the way it is now, there's no way that people would use sidewalks to go more than. You know, like one business to the next one over, um, but it's really not geared toward pedestrian, I mean, it's never gonna be a pedestrian part of town, it's just too big and there's two, you know, you're not gonna. I guess you could walk from one boatyard to the next maybe, look at boats.
It might one day.
Generally, you're gonna drive, so.
You could have, sorry, I've remained quiet this whole time, but I have been attentive, I just haven't really had anything to add until now. One thing that I was just thinking about, I, I find this really interesting, Andy, and thank you for the history, you know, if you were to have a developer interested in having housing built there, I mean. Affordable housing, I think of right away because it does have access to bus stops. So I, I just, I think that this is so antiquated, this section four nine and the purpose of the C one, and it sounds like it never really was authentic to what the C one wanted. That it seems like it needs to be overhauled, but how to do that and in conjunction with the comp plan? I don't know.
Again, that's why, you know, it just makes sense to get the comp plan complete and then, then apply that, that, um, those goals, right, to. All these different districts and make sure that they adhere to.
Shouldn't there be a vision for what?
Right, and then you.
Wants and then look at this against what's preventing.
That's the whole point of the comp plan.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I agree with everything, um, you've been saying, um, except for Sam, I think that one day, and I always think one hundred years from now. That could become a walkable place, you just have to plan ahead, that's how it works.
Yeah, no, fair enough.
Positive attitude.
Positive attitude, no, seriously, I'm, I'm, I'm dead serious.
Well, ironically, it might be temporarily, we have a lot of recent immigrants who are walking that corridor right now.
Good point.
Looks pretty dangerous to me.
Yeah, yeah.
You walk it, I run it. I mean, it, it's a really big wide shoulder there.
Well, the problem is, and, and because I walk it almost.
Yes, you do.
But the problem is, it was designed for a northbound lane of ninety-five, so on the right-hand side, we have a nice wide shoulder to pull over and what used to be the passing lane, which is the west side, has a very narrow shoulder. So I walk facing traffic so I can see who's gonna hit me, uh, because they weave a lot. And, uh, so I think we need wider shoulders on both sides, at least, because I, I meet people riding bikes south and there's not a lot of shoulder headed south. I meet a guy quite often in the morning, he's biking, you know, and he waves to me, we, you know, say hi, but there's not a lot of room for him going south. I'm more concerned with a good wide bikeable shoulder on both sides than I am a sidewalk right now.
Yeah, I guess maybe another, you know, I think it's unrealistic to expect individual developers or individual landowners to, to build and maintain.
Oh, yeah.
Sidewalks on their parcels without a clear vision for the sidewalk, like, that doesn't seem like the kind of thing that should fall to, like, it's not up to me. You know, sometimes I shovel the sidewalk in the morning outside my house because it's easy, it's right there, but it's not mine to maintain, you know, like, that's, the town put the sidewalk in.
Some municipalities do require.
That's the way it should be, I think, so I think, I think maybe the bigger issue, yeah, go ahead.
Just some municipalities do, um, require you to, for the upkeep of the, the public right of way in front of your house.
Yeah, in Portland they do, that's where I live, you have to.
But.
Yeah, I think, but that. I guess it, in thinking about Route one south, to me, it just seems like the, if, if, if Freeport wants, if the vision for Route one south includes sidewalks, that should be. A bigger project than to piece it together with individual landowners over time, like, we should say, we want a sidewalk here and this is how we're gonna make it happen. All at once so that it becomes a resource that, that is attractive to, to, you know, attracts the kind of development that we want, it just seems like that would be a more efficient way to do it than. Wait for it to materialize over time when there's no clear, you know, when, when the payback, I guess, for once, for somebody to go through the trouble and the expense of, of installing and maintaining a sidewalk in, in front of their property, the payback is. At best uncertain and at worst, you know, it's never gonna happen.
None.
I think this is just big picture and stuff like this, I think is, we really need to, to work on, but I, I just feel like we should wait until the comp plan is complete and then we, we target all these. I just don't know why we'd put a lot of work in now before the comp plan is done.
Yeah.
Especially with everything else we have, I, you know, it's not, I don't know.
What, yeah, what's the path to accelerating that, if that comes first? That makes sense.
That's, that's the overarching.
Unless there's a glaring problem that's preventing somebody from doing something that.
There is one, I mean, you know, my, I'm not, you know, pumping for my neighbor here, but, you know, the motel next to me, he's always wanted to do a, you know, some kind of development and he's just totally limited by the setback.
He's in a, he's got a nonconforming setback. See, what I don't understand is why. What?
Got a huge setback he can't use.
Oh, you're saying he wants to build closure to the road and he can't?
He's not using the motel, it's been turned into a storage unit.
It's a storage unit, but he wants to build closure to the road and he can't.
That's right.
But does he want to build a storage unit closer to the road?
I think so, he would. Well, I don't know who's over there now, they passed away, but, you know, when I talked to him, they would like.
This is where you get into is the long-term vision a hundred years from now for that, is, is there gonna be a street wall that's closer to the road than there is today? Is that. What people want or not? And I think it probably is what people want, I'm not sure, maybe it's gonna be. Is he farther back, is he the same distance back as the, like, Freeport outlet? Is that all the same setback?
No, I think that's.
Freeport outlet was built years ago before zoning was really, they built that in the seventies. That was Mycroft's lobster trap factory.
But to your point, that's the point in the comp plan is it has public input and the public helps create this plan.
Right.
And then it, we kind of implement it.
I'm tracking that.
I have my own grand visions for C one. I have my own grand visions for C1, it isn't a growth area, it isn't a transportation corridor. It could maybe one day become something beautiful, um, but we will have to plan for it. And, you know, it, I agree that we should do the comp plan, see what the community, like, I also have the sense that we need a community vision for that, and update whatever that document was, you know, to have development occur. Maybe the benefit of it having stayed so antiquated is that nothing really happened, so we're kind of ready to let the right thing happen. And, um, you know, Anna, you pointed out the affordable housing, and what I thought was interesting when I was reading through the past minutes that I could find, um, related to changes they did this, at some point, they added mixed use, and then they added a provision to lower the square footage per the land area per dwelling unit for that. And the intent of that seemed to be to create, you know, to create, to create affordable housing, so that people who work in Freeport could live here. So, but it's an example of, you know, it, it's, the intention was good, but it's ten thousand square feet, you know? That's kind of substantial, especially for a mixed-use development, you know, per unit, that you're gonna have to need a lot of acreage to develop that, it might not be feasible.
So they're saying it can't be any denser than four to the acre? Four, that's four, four dwelling units, if, if, right, that's what it's saying.
Well, at least on this, actually, we have some discrepancies in how some of us interpret even that whole section with the area per.
Minimum land per dwelling, yeah.
So, you know, the, um, to, to stay on track, um, as Caroline mentioned, we're not really gonna be revamping and redoing C1 right, right now. We're just looking to, you know, people want to do things, it seems like, you know, between the code officer, the planner, and other people, you know, members of the public, me, we all read this ordinance, and we all seem to be interpreting it different ways. The first time I ever had a nightmare about work was with C1, when I was dreaming about it, because I kept going back, like, oh, no, wait, let me read this again. And then, like, I would read it the next day, or like, I would read it again, like, several hours later, and come to a completely different conclusion of what it means. And, um, so we're, you know, there are two, you know, I think there's like one, maybe, there's like a blatant typo here, or, um, and there might be an issue on page seventy-four with, um, that three hundred feet with, um, that's very unclear.
Yeah.
There's issues with C1 all over, including the fact that there are footnotes. And one of the footnotes refers to the previous comprehensive plan. So it's making a reference to a document that is no longer used, so that was very, it took me a while to figure out what they were talking about, until I dug that one out. So, right now, you know, and, and as Caroline mentioned, um, we want to respect the intent of the changes to the ordinance that was made by past planning board members. So we're really trying to understand, what sections do you have questions on, do you find confusing? You know, what do you think, for those of us, for those of you who, who, you know, been here and followed what was happening? You know, what do you think the intent of these certain provisions were? It's a big question.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just, you know, I feel like the, that's a good question for the public, you know, the people that live here. It's. It's a big question.
Yeah, I don't understand what the vision for that area is, or what, I, I, Andrew, do you want your neighbor to be up close to the road? Not that your opinion is, that, you know what I mean, but do you think he should be allowed to build closer to the road?
Closer than three hundred feet, yeah, I would think so, you know, it sort of takes his whole front lawn and makes it useless.
Right.
Yeah, three hundred feet is, that's substantial.
Big, and if you don't need a big parking lot, I guess it's, for all the businesses that have a big parking lot in front, maybe that makes, even that, three hundred feet is a long frickin' way.
It is a lot.
That's right.
So they imagined a big boulevard? And, and if that was the intent of the planning board in two thousand eight, do we care? Shouldn't we be trying to figure out what, what should be allowed there and allowing it?
So you're, you're, you literally can have an acre in front of you.
That's right. And if you're saying that, I think it says you can't build housing more than four dwelling units to the acre, and I, I just wanna, Anna, you're correct, that this is the single best place to put affordable housing in the, if we were ever gonna build any kind of high-density housing, it, it, you know, at a lower cost, that's where it would go.
You, you picture what was, they were gonna put an elderly housing unit up off the hill off Pine Street, down the ridge. And, you know, the people on the other side of Pine Street just blew up.
Right.
And I'm like, it was permitted, they had forty acres, they had access to Route One, they had sewer and water, you know? And I remember sitting there with, you know, an elderly gent from Freeport, lived there all his life, and he says, you know, why shouldn't I be able to have a place in my own town where I can retire to?
Right.
And, you know, now they, then the next thing, they proposed a solar panel farm up there, which I guess is falling apart, but.
This is where.
Basically behind.
Top of Pine Street, parallel Route One the whole length. Right down behind the Millows, right down behind.
Behind the, behind.
Up on the ridge, up on the ridge, that whole ridge. On the water tower is, that whole ridge was.
Where the, where the, where the, uh, water tower is.
That's right, that's starting Pine Street, that abandoned house there, and down that whole section of the ridge.
It's a big lot.
It is a big lot.
Yeah.
And they would've come out down, farther down, and they, you know, but, once again, they got a lot of pushback from, you know, the abutting neighbors, and.
But you think anything, yeah, well, that does abut neighbors, but on Route One, one, the neighbors are kind of used to a commercial, a mixed environment?
Oh, oh, no, they're not.
No.
When they put in the Ford garage, the neighbors that lived behind, uh, were very adamant against.
Well, but how about the people who live on Route One? You, you, there's others, you know?
A few of us.
Yeah.
Fewer all the time.
Yeah.
I mean, there's myself, there's an apartment house next door, there's another house on Barney Street, that been there, you know, kids I grew up with, my age, and, uh, but, and there's a couple more up the street, but it's not that many anymore. Two or three of us been there a long time, but that's about it. And there's a, so, you know, I mean.
So what's the schedule on the comp plan?
Um, it depends on how many small projects we get sidetracked with, so that we don't have time to. Caroline, I think it, um, needs to find time to work on the RFP, to, you know.
That's a pretty good argument for leaving this alone, right there.
Yeah.
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 Well, I think we are, is that, what do we say?
Right, prioritize, we need to prioritize what we're gonna do, and the comp plan, in my opinion, should be number one priority.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that makes sense to me, I, I, I guess, like, the footnotes should definitely be corrected. I take particular issue with section C, space and bulk standards, that whole thing is just ridiculous. I, it doesn't make any sense. Or it's not that you can't figure it out, I guess, but it's, there's so many, you know, if the buildings or uses is, are connected to the public, and/or if one of the following conditions exists, or is provide, it's like, it just is incredibly confusing.
I don't like footnotes.
So, yeah, there's, there's plenty of opportunities to clean this up, I'm just not sure.
Yeah.
Doesn't make it clear for the applicant.
Yeah, footnotes just confusing, confuses things.
Yeah, I think the issue that we're having is that, like, the way that our code officer interprets it, certain sections on, I think mostly speci, I mean, a lot of, some of it really definitely related to C1 and Caroline, and then me, like, we might not, we haven't had the time actually to sit together and discuss it in the meeting, but we all interpret certain sections of this differently. And, um, I was having a really hard time also, Sam, with the, you know, if this and that, the provisions here, especially with the, the biggest headache for me was per lot of record, as of May, you know, like, a certain date, and I, I was like, why is that even there, like, what's the point? And.
Yeah, if-then statements are for, like, computer programming, not for zoning, you know?
And one of the things, when I was trying to figure out what was going on, and my first suggestion was to, like, let's just get rid of it, put a table with the standards, and we're ready to go. But one of the things that came up with doing some more, like, reading through the minutes and things, and it seemed like throughout, and even on the comprehensive plan, the past and maybe present, one of the things that were, they were extremely concerned about was traffic and the access points on US Route One. So they were really concerned about new development, the potential to create these new driveways that would have issues with traffic, and, you know, create possibilities of unsafe situations. It's, it's a, it's tricky, and I'm not.
Be safer if the traffic were slowed?
It's safer if they weren't on their cellphones every morning.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
I, um, yeah, and, and that's a really good point, and I'm not like a transportation planner, but like, that was the first thing that I thought about, it's like, why don't we slow the whole street down and take Main Street from downtown all the way south, right? Put sidewalks around it and have it into, you know, a walkable continuation.
It's long for, it's two miles long there, it, it's long for, you know, it's not the same as the downtown, but it's somewhat similar to Yarmouth in Route One, you know?
So the, the fight we had years ago, uh, when we were trying to argue these, all these permitted uses, which we fought vehemently for, uh, was that we heard the same thing over and over, we don't wanna be like Yarmouth, we don't wanna be like Yarmouth, cause Route One through Yarmouth were VIP and stuff like that. Really had no drainage, they just, you know, there was no retention ponds, it was pretty much, Yarmouth basically wanted to keep their main street the way it is, which is very nice, and they put everything out on Route One.
Right.
And they looked at Freeport saying they've ruined their main street, and we're not gonna, we put our business out on Route One where it belongs, and they made it very easy for people to do that. But when you notice the garage doors, the argument was, we don't wanna look like VIP in Yarmouth, so we'll have no garage doors facing the street unless it's residential. So it was a, a fear factor of a lot, I mean, we basically zoned against things, not for things.
Yep.
Which doesn't really work that well.
Yeah, I agree.
So, you know, instead of helping people make it look good, make it work, they just basically said, you know, we don't, we're gonna make it so hard, you won't come.
Yeah, yep.
I don't think there's gonna be another VIP in Freeport, but, you know, I mean, that was the fear all the time is.
Yeah, there was also a big concern about big box stores, and I think that's when they added, you know, certain provision, like, limiting the size of the.
Oh, yeah, that was a big fight.
Of the stores, and you know, that, that does.
One was ever gonna come, but.
Yeah, and that, you know, the big box store, I mean, they are awful, and in planning best practices, you know, especially around the day that they created exchanges or those years, like, that was a hot topic. So I could see why they would've made that provision, and it was perhaps the correct provision, so you don't end up with, you know, a giant mega store that is just, you know, not really utilizing the space as well as it could. And it's not what the community envisioned here too, so there are some really good things about this. It's just, it got very sophisticated, and I'm not sure if, it just also got very confusing, so it, it is tricky.
So is the, so is the assignment, first of all, that we all see what we find confusing, and you guys meet and circle the parts that are most problematic?
The assignment was to, um, that right now, it's, we're having some interpretation issues, or confusion in its interpretation, or sections that are unclear, and that if we could look back and see what was the intent of, you know, not, not to, to do what, Mitch, what you're saying is like, why are we, you know, if this is not a good code, like, why are we gonna keep it? Let's like toss that and come up with what we think the community wants. So that's not the assignment, as much as I wish it were, the assignment is just to clarify the language so that people who right now want to develop know what's allowed.
Talking about the implementation side, as far as how this, not the uses, but how the uses work, is where the confusion is.
The confusion is on some of the standards, um, you know, and like that dwelling.
Particularities of the language, but we shouldn't discuss whether it's three hundred or two hundred or one hundred, right? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, that's, I think.
Leave everything alone, just figure out, is it clear what it says?
For now, yeah.
Can I propose a path, a path forward here? It, with, with the intent of wrapping up our discussion on C1, um, you feel free to disagree with this, but this is kind of how I see the most efficient way to move forward here is, and it's a little bit of putting it back on, on you, Cecilia, and Caroline, and Nick potentially, but I think, given the, the concern about staff resources as we move toward the comp plan, and, um, you know, overhauling the, the downtown design standards and, and some of these other things that are gonna take up a lot of staff resources, and a lot of board resources too. I would say that if there are specific areas in which you guys find yourselves in conflict, then the board would be happy to review a proposed, you know, clarification, and sort of provide guidance on whether the clarification seems like it's in line with the spirit, uh, for lack of a better word, the spirit of the, of the ordinance. But in the absence of such a conflict, maybe we just leave this alone until after, after the comp plan. I'm just not sure the board is.
Good idea.
Is going to be the, an, an efficient way to revise the language without knowing where the sticking points are. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does.
Yeah.
You know, if you, if any of you read this at home, and you find a section that you find particularly confusing, just, you know, let us know.
Yeah.
Wait, let me first check with Caroline if it's okay for you to email that feedback back, or I don't know, I'm getting still familiar with this process, um, so I haven't come up to that yet. Or it might be just at the next meeting, if you could flag to us what, you know, I looked at this, and I, I just found this particular article very confusing, or like, that's, um, but yeah, I, I agree. It's, it's not, it's something that I could see being extremely, it's a, it's an important part of town, and I would like for it to be well-developed, it's on a growth area, which means that this other thing that we haven't talked about, which is mains LD two thousand and three with the, all the housing bill, you know, that would be an area where they would get an increase if they were developing affordable housing, so it'd be two point five, um, of the density.
But the density's only four.
Yeah.
So that only gets you to six, which you can't build affordable housing.
Right, it could be that even with the density, it could be so prohibited that you might not even.
It is prohibitive, it's no, it's not even worth, it, it is prohibitive. You can't build affordable housing six to the acre.
No.
No, no. I think Sam's suggestion is spot on, it makes a lot of sense to me, and I, I agree with it.
And for the record, Mitch, I, and I've been on the record many times saying I'm in favor of denser, or less restrictive, um, density requirements in almost all cases, except for the rural district, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, you know, US Route One.
Here in particular.
It's all about smart growth for me, so like, that's why I'm like.
I agree.
I'm really looking forward to see one becoming a great place, cause that's, like, you know, in terms of smart growth, that's.
That's where the potential is.
The textbook scenario of where you wanna, you know, that in downtown.
Exactly, yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
The bus goes by every day, that's right, that, it's the.
Yep.
And we don't have a bus stop down there.
And, and the, and the parking rides, I mean, everything that is set up to do, to be there.
It's a sleeping ride, that's what the campus hangout's with.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it is.
Every night.
Does anybody know if.
We have two members and, um, two attendees, I don't know if, um, Sam, you want to take public comment?
Oh, I haven't even seen other hands.
Um, no, I don't see any hands, but.
Quieter.
If any members of the public want to talk, you can, if Sam.
Yeah, you can, oh, I see, okay, sorry, participants, there we go, attendees. Yeah, if anyone wants to, wants to chime in or has questions, feel free to raise a, a virtual hand. Otherwise, I'm gonna take out my agenda here again. Any other thoughts on, on C1, or are we, I think, ready to move on to, what is it, item six?
I think we're ready.
Am I ready, right on that, item six? Sorry for all the paper shuffling here.
Andrew, Andrew, is this what you were talking about?
Yeah.
It's pretty interesting, yeah.
That's the old.
I can't find my agenda, sorry.
Okay, I have it here.
What somebody else was thinking.
Not us.
Yes. Not us on Route One.
Oh, yeah, so we're gonna look at the planning board's schedule for two thousand and twenty-three, if you all have that in front of you, we're just looking to see if you have any, you know, look at the dates, especially looking for feedback in whether you want to, you know, already cancel the meeting right after July fourth, the fif- already cancel the meeting right after July fourth, the fifth one, or move it to some other time.
I'd like to move it the following Wednesday or something if possible, but.
I think it's coastal waters that meets on the second Wednesday of the month.
It can get a Tuesday or, yeah, we're flexible.
Oh, yeah, we might have luck going for the Tuesday, that Tuesday.
Yeah.
So trying to move it to another day.
July eleventh?
Yep.
Okay, we can check the room and see if it's available. And just like, you know, take a look at this maybe at the next meeting if there's any blatant ones. The other thing too is that once we start working on the comp plan, we might be asking you to meet more than once a month, so.
Expected that.
I think it's good, you know, that's to me priority.
Okay.
Yep.
And we can check back again in, but. So so far we'll look into possibly moving the July fifth meeting to maybe some other time. Okay. Sam, do you need me to get to the agenda here with the, I think?
I'm assuming that item seven is non agenda items and I'm also assuming that there are none. But, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone who is here, either virtually or in the room? And otherwise, we'll entertain motions for item number eight.
Move we adjourn.
In a second.
I second it.
There we go.
All right, I think you guys have a quorum right there in the room, so I think we can just vote, maybe.
Yep, we do have a quorum.
All in favor?
All in favor?
All right, it's over.
I just want to say also, Cecilia, you did excellent tonight, way to go.
Sorry, I'm like so getting used to it.
You did really good.
Hanging in there.
I I would second that for sure.
Thank you, you guys are being very kind.
Hope you feel better, Sam.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel, I feel relatively okay, but hopefully I'll be back in person next month.
Oh, dear.
Thank you, Sam.
All right, good night.